Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
No.
Next, Nancy. Can you get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Joe. Any corrections, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay.
Abstain.
And ad hoc charades. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the non-public minutes of June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Close minutes, I can use.
Thanks, Nancy. Second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Joe. How much there? We'll give you only the two seconds.
Oh, yeah.
Two seconds.
All right, we're good.
Everybody have any corrections, comments?
No.
All in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. And abstentions.
Abstain.
And ad hoc charades. Correspondents, I did receive a letter from Nancy Ingles to the school board. I just might as well just read it out loud and then I can pass it around to anybody that's seen it. "I want to thank you for your thoughtful and generous gift and card. It means a lot to me to know your thoughts are with me as I lead Lindwood. I thoroughly enjoy teaching at Lindwood for the past twelve years. I'm honored to have each of you represent our school. I wish only the best for the future of our wonderful community school. I thank you for your dedication to the students, the staff, the school, and our community." Thank you, Nancy Ingles.
Nice.
I didn't have any other correspondence.
I didn't have any.
Reports. Debbie, business administrator's report.
Just a couple things, I'm currently working on the end of the year, two thousand eighteen nineteen, DOE twenty-five, Department of Ed, report. And along with that, preparing for the audit. So the auditors are coming in September eleventh through the thirteenth, so kind of prepare the two at the same time. And there is an audit questionnaire in the packet that you'll see later.
Do you have any questions for Debbie? Super Dennis reports. You lead.
Yes, I did have, I did have some, the National School Board Association training sessions that are coming up from time to time. You should be, you should be getting those as board members in your emails, so if you're not getting them, let me know, because you should be getting as well. And if anyone wants to go to any trainings, trainings or any type of webinar sessions, just let Janette know. We're signing up for it, so you don't have to go through that process. Just to let you know that the National School Boards Association is having their delegate assembly January twenty-fifth, and it's on a Saturday. But what you do, what, there is one representative that we don't have. For that, that goes to it, and they just listen to all of the resolutions that the boards across the state have, have presented. And then they vote on which ones are, you know, they want to add, and they work on those for the, it comes like goals, resolutions, which is, you know, on focus items. Summer projects are all-
Can I just say one thing, my, my understanding is that each school board has one voting member that can go and vote.
Yes.
But any school board members who vote to attend and have input.
Yes. Absolutely. Summer projects are coming to an end, it was a busy summer, and Mark will be able to go into detail with those, you know, coming up on the agenda. Again, the science room is meeting weekly on the science room, and we would be doing a final walkthrough tomorrow with God Hill and the committee. See if any of the touch lists are being sent to Debbie here. And the teachers begin professional development this week, Monday was for the new teachers, new staff only. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays for all staff members. What we ended up doing for your, the federal funds that we received for the emergency safety project that, that the state enabled districts to do, was, we did have some monies left over. And so whatever monies were left over from the high school project, the vestibule, we ended up putting, purchasing items for the elementary. So we will be able to do some of that construction in the elementary as well. And that will happen during October Columbus Day weekend. And it's a four day where the staff won't be there on Friday because they have a professional development day. So that enables the contractors to come in from Friday until Monday, four days where they can get some work done. And we'll see what they can get done while no one's around. And then if there's a couple of days after that, it will be that front door that will have to be, you know, just cornered off and blocked off. So this other entrance is an exit cell available. And school begins next, next Tuesday. I have been communicating with Mark Dolan, an ECU contractor from the National School Boards Association, who will be working on the strategic plan for the school district. Will take approximately three to four months to do, and we're looking for a couple of board members as well to be on that. We do have two teachers that have offered to be on that committee, and then we'll get some community members and whatnot, but maybe with that. We do have a resignation that we can go into non-public.
Sure.
That's it.
Do we have any questions for Judy at this time, I know that there's a couple updates later on.
Yeah.
And I think continuing business, that are here. Mark, you ready?
First of all, Monday, this past Monday, we had a nine grade orientation for, for students, it was pretty well received. We had a couple of teachers that were able to meet the kids, going towards a couple of expectations. So it was really good turnout, there was a group of girls initially, and then people came in, and together they, they did the, uh, the school question stuff. So I believe that hasn't been done in a long time, because it was good to have that turnout. We have a new SAP teacher that was hired, her name was, her name is Carly Pumpkin, in place of Chad. Her meeting was Sean O'Brien next week, who kind of gave me a little bit more background information of what the expectations are from there. I'm not sure how that process evolved in terms of the hiring, but I know that we contract out, so it was something that did replace, and there was some representatives from the former school there to help with the process, and it's actually been a good thing. I'm looking at, within their ninth grade classroom advisors, Peter Stoloff, he is a high school teacher, and he was really interested in doing something next year with the, with the kids this year. And I thought this was a good career, and he was talking about how he wanted to step up and get a little bit more involved. Since last year was his first year at the school, he's kind of getting a flow, he knows it's important, he really wants to be, be with his kids. We also had a building leader meeting today with our building leadership team, basically the ones that were from last year, and is going to be to work on that group. So I wanted to make sure that they were still involved in that, that leadership team with the K through twelve, and that's in the R and the I's, moving the L C, David, Derek, Jason, Michelle. Kristen Van, Kira Smith, Sean, and Sean, so we know this, and the way we utilize our building leaders this year is going to be a, you know, more initial position, not just going back and forth in terms of lots and makes and changes. And that, that will develop that leadership spot for, for not only those teachers, but future teachers, bringing them into the mix. And so they're actually going to be doing work on teacher methodology, doing a pass on the teachers, and not only that, but working with data, and determining how we, our protocols, and, um, just turn that into all together. So, so the P D is coming, and we're pretty excited about the wellness department, and been involved in school with wellness, this involved before. So it's, it's kind of interesting, and we're getting a little stretched, some things that I don't know if we do. You know, the teachers have been pretty productive in our classroom, but I'm noticing is that, you know, they're really community oriented, and so that's a big focus for, for where we are, and starting to dance that way back into the leadership, our building and our community within the school. We're kind of anxious about some of the expectations, and some of the things that we're looking at as a leadership team, which is basically what it's supposed to be like. We're going to be doing registration as well, and anxious. So it's going well, not without, not without some challenges, but that's what we do, we work through challenges. And then, I think that's about it.
Any questions for Mark?
I do, actually, I'm not sure who the question, I was hoping one of you would address it. There was an issue or some, a problem with the charter school bus this morning, that the, has it been resolved, or was there an issue?
No, transportation, that was something that they're working, we were working out with a contract and service provider, and they're doing bus services. And, and the charter school, for this district is starting next week. They'll be starting Tuesday.
Oh, oh, okay.
Charter school did start on, on this past Monday, but the, each school district starts at a different-
Oh, I see, okay, so it goes with district, not with the charter school itself, okay. I had a parent call this morning saying, he was supposed to go, but he didn't, so-
This is some, this is some challenge that we have with making our calendar every year, and you never can win all the battles.
Right, right, right.
We always, you know, sometimes we start too late, and people, it doesn't matter-
I imagine it's as difficult as scheduling, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, good, good, I'm glad that that was excellent.
It's our deal.
Yeah, good, great.
I, I just had, I had a comment, I guess first as a parent, then as a school board member, and also as a coach of Lindwood, I just wanted to recognize the preseason sports meetings that you opened, Mr. Laux. And they were, you know, it was basically a mandatory meeting for athletes and parents where expectations were set. You know, some good discussion on how we want to represent our community, and that, you know, our actions as adults and as student athletes represent all of us, not just ourselves, it represents our school, our teachers, our parents, our community. And I thought the turnout just reflected that it's something that the community appreciates. So I, I know for the middle school when I was there with, with us on, I, I think almost all the parents and athletes were there, I mean-
Great.
It was a great showing, so, and I heard it was the same with the high school, so we were down to see the high school, so. Yeah, so, I mean, I, thank you for doing, I think that's something we've talked about for a long time, and to see, and to see it happening, and to see that there was engagement from the other side shows that the community wanted that too, so.
How great is that, that's good.
Community reports. I know that policy and facilities have not met since last meeting, I'm really gonna, you're gonna give us an update later, Mark, later on. Okay. Anything, anybody else need on anything?
The wellness committee has met a couple of times, I'm the board member for the wellness committee, unfortunate for them, because they often meet when I can't, when I can't attend, but I'm hoping to make that, make an adjustment so that I can. Because they are super duper active and have really good ideas, there's a resort, there's going to be like a resource, I forget what they're calling it.
Resource fair, the back to school night, but actually Anne, Anne can go into it too, because she's the head of the, chair of the wellness committee if she wants, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Resource, yeah. Yeah, if one of you want to talk about it. If one of you want to talk about it, yeah, you know way more than me, and I think it's, I think these guys would have, it's such a great idea, and I think it's, I, I hope that it has the same reaction from the community that the meetings that you were talking about have. I hope that it's useful, and they find it useful, and they, and they want to do it.
I would say that it's not, I'm sorry, I'm, I would say that it's not finalized yet.
Yeah.
In terms of all the logistics, and so not all the staff members are-
Oh, okay. Oh, so the, the resource fair is not a definite yet, or just a little-
No, no, no.
Right. Right, the details of it, yeah. Got you.
Mark, this might be an appropriate time just to address facilities, and we're getting, giving us an update on, you know, the couple of things that we're going on.
Yeah, well, yeah, we have a lot of things going on. Oh, boy, I gotta see it down. Basically, like Dr. McGann stated, that the science room, they're going to do a walk through tomorrow, okay, there is a punch list for the room, but it's usable. It's a very, you know, the front entrance, we're setting up the access and stuff tomorrow, putting the floor down, so that'll be completed for school start. Let me see, and then in here, Ben's, New England Sports Floors, promised me he's going to be back here tomorrow, but I want to tell you, he promised me he'd be here today, and he promised me he'd be here yesterday, and he hasn't been there.
How much later is it?
My goodness.
It's almost done.
It's done, except for a red color on the lumberjack.
Yeah.
The coal base around the room, and then the stair tread, there's like a, I'm gonna call it facial, but it's not, but it's the tread that goes up.
Sure.
Caps top that's non-slip, so we're waiting for that. And on that, the other science room that we scavenge all the classrooms from Dave's room, that's all together, and the teacher in there is very happy, it looks nice. In fact, the guy's really impressed me, he looks good in there. You guys have any questions on anything else?
That was one of them.
What was that?
After we scavenge and stuff, and we're using it.
Oh, yeah, we did, it took us three days to take her out of the room, we did have one, one guy get injured, so I lost a guy for four weeks. But anyways, done, we moved all the soapstone down, the tables and stuff, and it came together very nicely, I was able to cut the sinks out, so we closed up the tables, but it's perfect for that room.
The parking lot looked nice.
Yeah, did a nice job there, I wish the grass looked a little nicer, but the grass is getting ahead of me.
The peels look good.
It looked pretty good, oh, yeah.
Oh, the front lawn, the, the work that the guy did, Mike Jostling, the work he does is fantastic, I've learned a lot from him, on how to take care of lawns, and-
It's a lot more to it.
You know, I, I don't, yeah, I, I have no, you know, I'm honest when I say I have no clue, because I'm not a grounds person. But we've reseeded it, he's getting ready to refertilize it next week, and you gotta wait for some heavy rain before he fertilizes.
He's getting it right now.
We don't think it's gonna be enough, though.
Yeah, I mean, fertilize it. It looks, the, the grass is unbelievable.
Yeah, and then the front field, they put in that new mix, they had to combine it, and that looks very nice.
Tropical storm Irene was eight years ago today, so be careful what you wish for.
Oh, jeez, I don't know. On that, we, we fixed eight meeks on our roof, which we're gonna get back on the roof plan for next year. But we had some seams, we were up there taking care of that, we used some stuff called white knight to coat it, and just to get us through until we're able to pull it up and redo it. The new air handler that's in the science room is unbelievable, it's got a graphic picture on it for the classroom, so they can see, shows the air coming in, shows the air leaving, and it's all in graphics, it's really, really cool. Yep, a lot of different things, we got the lights fixed up here, so we don't have a landing strip, this is coming winter when we have meetings. And the pole that got backed over, that just came back from Wilco, and we're gonna hopefully have that up for school starts. Is there any questions on anything, or?
Did the trees cut down?
What? No, not yet, we got a, a lot brushed on, stuff like that, but I have to beg for some more money.
All the flower beds and the-
Well, yes, yeah, that's-
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
This lady's daughter right here. Katie Black.
That's awesome, because I was noticing the other day, and was gonna say something.
It's very well-
It was all, all volunteer work, and in order to graduate here, one of the stipulations, you're gonna have forty hours of community service. Well, she's gone sixty hours, and even then she wasn't stopped.
Good for her.
She would've come this week, but she was working at the farm.
But she did a very good job.
Fantastic.
In the kitchen, we put up a bunch of FPR board, you know, that fiberglass reinforced board, made it look a lot cleaner, easier, new garbage disposal, things like that.
That was another question, the garbage disposal, everything in, working?
Oh, it's cool, yeah. Turn it on, lights dim, the whole building gets-
Excellent.
It's a big machine.
I love it.
Well, yeah, though it's all in place and running, screening stuff.
Well, I, I know, every year we have a lot going on up in summer, but this, this summer was particularly lucky, so thank you to you, who, I know it couldn't have been easy, I'm sure there was a lot of high burn, but-
Yeah, mostly from you and all your calls.
I know, I know, I know. But, no, it's-
The rest of this week, trying to get it done, and then find it.
The only thing that I gotta say, well, we've got three dumpsters, but we have some new programs that we're using at the elementary, I think that's a new reading program, new math program. You wouldn't believe the boxes, anyone need boxes? It could be actually used as fill, that's how much we have.
Wow.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Cool. Any questions?
I did, and I don't know, being new to this, what the protocol is, and if I wait till a board meeting and, or give them a phone call and circumvent the board, I don't know what to do. My two things, noticing, playing at the playground with the grandkids, when you're first climbing up the steps, there's a top piece that's missing off of one of the posts. Were you aware? Can it be ordered? Okay.
I do, I do-
Well, now you are.
I expect it every month.
Right, right, right. So I, I noticed it the other day, that it was one of the top, I mean it's-
One of the caps?
Yeah, one of the caps, on one of the posts is missing, right at the beginning on the left.
Yeah.
And a trash can for the outside basketball court, is that possible, I, twice this year, I've picked up trash, brought a bag over, picked it up, left it by the front door.
But to be honest with you, that's, that's, between the bear and the other stuff that we've had problems with, that's one thing that, we get focused on things.
Yeah.
And we forget that one garbage can, and we also forget the one down front at, from time to time.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'll take responsibility for that. But the easiest thing to do is either let Judy know, or Mark know, give them a call.
Oh, I just brought over a trash bag and picked it up and left the trash bag by the front door, I mean, it was easy, it was not a big deal, we were walking by anyway. But I just figured I'd let you know, a trash can out there would be an awesome thing.
Sometimes we have to pick things up, especially during the month of August.
Uh, yes, everywhere in town, I get you.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that the appropriate thing to do, is wait till the board meeting?
No, you can call.
Just call?
Yep.
Okay.
And then they, they relay it to me.
Perfect. Thank you. And we're talking about the sign later?
It's on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
That's why I went to Mark about the trees that he cut down out there.
Oh, you can repair the board, I mean, but it doesn't, I mean, do you see something outside, usually it goes to administration for it.
And then administration will, you know, mark your-
This is dangerous trees out there, you cut down.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay. So call Mark or Judy, and then, okay, got it, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have, I didn't know whether you wanted to go over the committee assignments during this part of the meeting, because I do have a list of committee assignments for board members, for the need filling.
Okay, sure, yeah. We never ask, I don't know what Tony's on.
Yeah, everybody else is in the blue packet.
We have them in the blue packet, yeah.
We have the support section, Judy's passed away.
That's all, that's all.
We have, we're a school district committee, we have technology, risk management, and strategic plan. Again, the strategic plan committee will only be three to four months, unless that's done, that will, that committee will be in.
Yeah.
How long do we have?
Excellent.
That is, that like quarter through.
How often?
Monthly, or do you want to go every other month, or?
For what?
I've been technology.
Technology committee?
Monthly's fine.
Monthly, at, at the most.
I can probably answer.
I'll do risk management and strategic plan.
I was gonna, strategic plan, I think that's awesome, because I can give people school board, but you also have to-
Sure.
Yeah. We talked about having my local officials on, should I?
I think we want to reach out to the, to the select board as well.
But that actually gets us to select board.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, and I'll take the risk management as well, I'm on the risk management board, committee for the town, so it's just overflow.
And they meet quarterly, usually after school.
Perfect. Yep.
Is there, is there another board member who would like to be part of the strategic plan committee?
I'm interested in it, but I don't want to take it from somebody if they want to do it.
That's in the evenings.
Right, that's gonna be in the evenings.
Maybe it's-
I'm going to notice that, according to the committee members.
I think, yeah, whoever, whoever at least would be part of the committee will probably set the, set the path forward, but it's, but it's important that, I mean, this is, this attendance for this is mandatory, not, like, I'm not saying that's anybody specific.
No, no, yeah.
If you're gonna start up, I mean, this is, we haven't done a strategic plan, a real strategic plan for the school district. I can't remember the last time other than just a M E S plan, which isn't a strategic plan for us, so it's, it's something that-
I have nothing but time, because I don't think I'm qualified to do it.
There's no qualification, I don't ever feel like-
I'm absolutely qualified.
It's probably the only qualification I can have.
Right.
I have nothing but time.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do it.
I mean, I'm super interested in it, I was interested in initiating this idea in the first place, but I also, yeah, don't want to like step onto it.
We can go up to three, so.
Okay. So I'm gonna plan to be on it.
Joe?
I'll do it there, here.
Brian, Brian, he said he wanted to.
No, but like, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, right.
I could do that, yeah.
I can do it. No problem, yeah.
So, Tandy, John, Jasmine?
Tandy, John, Jasmine, yeah.
We're, we're looking for-
Yeah, but well, this is the thing, with anything, you know, you can bog down the efficiency of the process, and so when people bog, and, and you, you need to kind of be strategic and do a stakeholder draft, and look at representation of the community is, in order to make sure that it's, it's, I mean, you want to make all perspectives, or two.
Now, there are parents involved in this, too.
There will be parents, there will be teachers, there probably will be student leadership, that's it.
Excellent.
And it was interesting, one of my biggest takeaways from his presentation, what was his name? Yeah. It is a real parallel to a lot of different therapies, the like strength based, and it just is, a lot of parallels, it's awesome, it's super exciting, and I have a lot of hope in it.
I can't wait to just do the schedules and stuff and all of that, for how the kids want their stuff set up, as far as their schedules, the block schedule, if we can get all of that done as part of all this, it would be wonderful. So that we're not flopping for block schedules, there's periods of block, and half block, it'd be nice just to get something that works, yeah.
All right, that was, so are we good now?
Yes, I, I just wanted to do that, and thanks.
Any other comments? So, Mark, we're, we're on to board action, did we, are we approving representations for advisors, or you just, you just don't, we don't-
I'm just bringing this forward. And you were in the board last quarter.
I'll be asking a question for another hangar.
So, okay, so Brianna Bennett is going to be the middle school, middle school board basketball coach, and she is currently a pair in the pocket program in the district, so she will be behind us.
All right, continuing business.
I just have one more thing on business board action, is the bus contract.
Okay.
Okay, so I just, I just want to give a little bit of a background on this, if, if you remember correctly- If, if you remember correctly, in April, uh, we lost a fleet manager, and that fleet manager for the buses that take care of vocational, charter school, after-school, all those programs, we take care of those within the school district. So, the fleet manager resigned, so we had posted that, that fleet manager is a fleet manager as well as a bus driver, the main full-time bus driver. And then you have two part-timers. Um, that position has never been filled. Um, the two part-timers have been worked, finished the year for us, and so we did put it out to bid, and we had, uh, the only one that bid was Durham Bus Services. So, Durham School Services, so, uh, we just literally just finished working on a contract with them today. So, uh, that would be something where, in, in talking with, um, council, uh, they recommended the board, uh, vote to, to, uh, go to allow, go into a contract with Durham Bus Services. And that, that contract is going to take care of all of your vocational, and your charter school, and your after-school, your two after-school commitments with students. K through five, and then six through twelve. Uh, and they will be taking care of all of those. Your two part-timers that we have will be doing any, because we still have the small bus, I mean, obviously, we have one small bus that, that these two part-timers can use, and we have one small bus that, that, um, requires a CDL. That is known in the district, that we draw that. So, your two, uh, part-timers will be continuing to do small runs within the district. We have a special ed run, you know, that, that is required, and, uh, that will begin next week, and that will be taken care of by those two part-timers. And any, um, needs that come up during the year with, with students, and needs for small bus transportation.
Like, are those the worst, like, date? Is necessary schooling for one of the part-timers to get a C D L?
They don't want it.
They don't want it.
They want, I mean, they go on vacation, they don't want a full-time, and they don't want a C D L, we've had that discussion.
And there's no one that does that.
Yeah, right, and transportation companies all over the state are struggling with that.
Is Durham Bus Services the one that we're, that we were sort of not particularly satisfied with services they would provide to us?
Yes.
For our everyday routes.
We only need them out where we want.
And again, we, we reached out, I mean, to all of the transportation companies, and they just said, we don't have the staff.
Yeah, the capacity, yeah.
Isn't that even high in terms of our sports team, last year, when we found another company?
That was two years ago.
That was two years ago, we worked that out with another company, so that's all set.
Was that still...
That's still worked out with the other company, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and, no, they...
No, they couldn't, we did end, we put it out to them.
And, and you know, when, when this contract ends, because this is a contract, remember that, that Robertson had, so they, they bought the contract, so, so that, this is the last year of the contract, so we'll be putting it out, a whole new contract out to bid.
But it will be an entire contract?
Everything.
Or maybe more appealing to others, that are not necessarily, we work on for small ones here.
So, this contract is only...
For one year? Yes, the one that you just, we just, just a year.
For this particular piece of it?
Yes, yes, and the other one, we are in the fifth year of the five-year contract.
Right, so we'll put it out to... And what about the sports contract, is that, we, everything is sort of ending at the same time?
That's kind of a year, a year with this other bus company, so we'll put it all out to bid.
Great.
You guys are great with the sports, but some of our, there's one, there's one bus that they use, and it's not the biggest bus, and some of our sports teams are, are larger, so when you have two soccer teams using, I mean, I don't even know if this is... This, the teams this year have twenty kids on each team.
High school kids.
I mean, I know that they'll fit, but it's...
You can fit three, six-year-olds in a seat.
Yeah, it's gonna be...
You'll see some plus here.
Yeah, it's, you might have to push it up a couple of years. That was the joke.
So, I would, I would ask the board to vote, take a vote on that, so that we can move forward with that contract?
Do we know that, is it to allow to enter into, do we know what the contract is?
Enter into a contract with Durham School Services.
I mean, we don't really even know the contract, right, that's administration, we just give information to do the contract, is that how it works?
Right. It's also something that's been talked about over the years, to see if someone else could, because it's a lot more than just driving the bus, it's maintaining all the rosters, maintaining all the stuff for the state, maintaining the buses, the maintenance on the buses, all of that, it's a lot more.
This, this, with this though, should we just not post the government?
The bus driver?
Just in that?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right.
We should still pay for it.
We still need to have a bus roster for our two-part time guys, but we can do that.
Is this a...
Right, we'll put enough in that line so that it will cover the proposal.
Yeah.
For next year, I mean, for the next, however many years.
Is this likely to result in a decrease in, uh, part-time hours in the other two drivers you give?
Slightly, but no, no, what they're doing now, you may have, uh, you know, they have special needs and...
You said they both basically retired in, the average doesn't probably add up to the same amount.
No. Will this contract be covered financially with what was budgeted for the previous fleet manager? Great.
Yeah, it's covered with the budget.
Excellent.
I think our board is, for one year, for the bodies there, and sensibilities there, we've got three days, maybe.
That's kind of an over there.
Right.
I think we go for it with the idea that we're gonna look at the whole thing at, uh, next year and build out the factors that hopefully shines to somebody, where maybe we weren't getting it though, because we were trying to take on too much with our own drivers, we're not giving them the pieces. If we give all the pieces, maybe the bus company will manage it, and now we're ready to work it.
Right.
Well, it sounds like, that's it, did you say that there's like a shortage in the, like, there's just a shortage of them?
They have road drivers, so many S U's don't have sport drivers or... We're a big high school district, we have, we have high school sports, technical sports, high school schools.
Yeah, it's definitely true.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah?
It's not just up here, it's...
It's south-south, it's in Massachusetts, it's everywhere.
It's in every industry, not just bus.
Yes, not just bus drivers. I was thinking the same thing, right.
Same problem. Two and a half percent of...
Every business in town, right.
I, I think a motion to, uh, give the administration permission to do the contract for bus services, uh, with Durham School Services, School Services, uh, to cover our, uh...
Vocational charter and after-school.
Sorry, can I ask any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with a say nine.
Hi.
Close A, extensions, and that motion carries. The school board audit questionnaire, so every year, uh, we need to fill out as a board, we need to answer our questions, and I need to have a motion to sign on behalf of the board, so I'm just gonna read the questions aloud, and we can answer them as a group, and if I get any questions, uh, Debbie can answer them. Do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting your entity? So, no, unless anybody has something they want to bring to you? Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulators, or others alleging fraud?
No.
Assuming no, unless you otherwise... Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity? No, unless you otherwise, no. Has the board adopted universal code of ethics for monitors and employees to follow? That's yes. If yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity? That's also yes.
No.
Uh, no, also no.
And those policies aren't... Right, right.
Have, have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July first, two thousand and eighteen, to which the school district S A U, or any retirement, savings, pension, or other similar plan was, or is to be a party? And they should all be known unless I hear otherwise, sale or purchase, exchange, or leasing of property, receiving or furnishing of goods, services, or facilities, transfer of, or receipt of income or assets, maintenance of bank balances, as complicated balances for the benefit of another, or other transactions? Do we know anything that we know on that?
No.
Does the board formally authorize all this business, book, renter, and payroll prior to the release of funds, and that should be, um, yes. Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the laws and regulations pertaining to the entity? Do you do the, the business administration reports?
N H S B A.
Yeah. Does the board review comparative reports of estimated actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures? Yes. If yes, how often are reports reviewed?
Weekly? It's always during budget, at the end of the year, and, and try to do it quarterly.
And this, the last one said weekly.
Yeah, the weekly manifest of payroll.
Oh, for that, yeah.
What procedures do the board follow when reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally need department heads as part of the process? Also, does the board review budget and revenue and expenditure reports? Last, last time it was through annual budget session reports, we had department heads during scheduled budget workshops, is there a regular that still? Has the board approved the disaster recovery plan in the event of loss or interruption of the I T function? And that is a yes.
It's attached, yeah.
Is there a written investment policy adopted? And that's yes, and that's attached as well. Have you adopted the use of either debit or credit cards by employees? And that is yes, and that policy's attached as well. Does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in the custody of the treasurer? And that answer is yes, and that's a student activity account?
And the trust plans?
And the trust plans. Has the board approved a fund balance policy compliance with G S, B A S B fifty-four? And that's yes. That is also attached. And does the school district S A U have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities? If so, please indicate what they are, on what website they are maintained, and who is responsible for that. We do not, right?
Yeah, that's a new, somewhat new question, and I think, didn't you go over that in a, I mean, yeah, no, we don't have any knowledge, and you also went through that in a policy.
Yeah, we did have, we did address that, um, you know, recent, um, I mean, that was a new, new process, but that's, that's what we addressed, because it was...
Right, I think because of...
So, there is a policy, and I, I believe the policy is that it's pretty much a simple question, somebody...
Right, so we have knowledge of what's going on.
That's what we know.
Okay. Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yeah.
So, let's say something happens, you know, the school, and somebody, so, so, like, who funds the accounts, have you done it?
Right, those types of things, they need to get permission, and we, and...
And the types of things that we were talking about when during that, the policy discussion was, you know, like, if the sports teams were trying to raise money for the university or something like that, that's something that's probably a budget model, I was trying, you know, for, for, for example, if that would be, and it was about, uh, the, the, uh, permission from administration. I think that we talked at least about, you know, private stuff, you know, for the teacher kids injuries, or maybe staff members will, will do, okay, that's not something that the school needs to be involved in, but if it's something that, like, where the, the district or is raising funds for school-related activities, then that's something that you need to...
Correctly traced.
Right.
Anything that was a school related, and that...
So, I would, I would need a motion that, uh, authorizes the board chair to sign this document on behalf, behalf of the board.
So, moved.
Thank you, Tammy. Thanks, Joe. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor, please signify with a say nine.
Hi.
Close A, extensions, and that motion carries. Mark, I think we have, uh, school sign, Mark, you're back on.
Who, me?
Yeah.
Okay, school signs, well, we have basically the same two groups, okay? The first one was a original one we had, but the four-by-eight sign will not fit in that spot. But for watch fire, we can take our existing sign, okay, which is only this much of the sign that's rotten, put it back, you know, that would be replaced with the, um, the panels. And the panels that I got a price on are, that's pixels, excuse me, tuck the blind. Okay, uh, it, yeah, probably should have looked this a little closer before. It'd be twenty-nine inches by eight foot three inches, by five inches deep, would be the unit that would mount all the sign that's there, but that came, with one color, came to thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
Mark, have you looked into like composite material that you can replace that with?
The top of the sign is composite, the bottom half is, uh, made out of wood, where the letters went, it's all wood, and that's rotten, that would have to be replaced in order to hang it. Um, the other sign that we looked at, it, which is a four-by-six, it's similar to one of her profile, I got a full color, okay, for ten thousand, seven fifty. But that's got the, almost, how do I explain it to you, it's a, it's a plastic sign on top of a lumberjack, and it's a square sign with, uh, the pixel down low, and that's all gonna be red.
How, how much is that?
That one was ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a picture, I have a photo to see. I happened to drive by this morning and, uh, saw their new sign, so I, I, my cousin works in this school, so I contacted first, how much cost it, they said it was fourteen thousand, five hundred. It looks basically what we were looking for.
Yeah.
It's a plastic...
Yeah, and then the foam.
Color sign with their school, and then like a single color LED, LED, because of the messaging.
So, you are gonna do L E D messaging? Have you filled those? Have you got a sign permit from the town of Lincoln yet?
Haven't even gone there.
Yeah, I brought one for you.
We haven't gone that far.
Well, I'm gonna give to someone who can, uh, read and write.
It should be easy, I love it.
Yeah, great.
Do you know how many lines are on that board of this, of the L E D?
Uh, just a minute. Okay, there are twenty-four... Okay, the pixel, these go twenty-four by eighty, you know, hold on, which is the referred four-by-six, I apologize for not having this printed out to you in the red. You want to know the size of it, or the amount of pixels?
The lines, so some of them are...
It could, it could do up to, uh, four lines.
Four lines, okay, that's...
Okay, it, it, and this one can run graphics and whatnot.
So, do you have to choose whether you want one that has two lines, or can you make two, or four, or three depending on?
What it is, Debbie, it's, um, basically, it's, um, all these little dots, so you can fix as many lines as you want.
Oh, perfect.
But they recommend that you don't go over four lines because of the height. It's a, you can change different sizes, you can actually show a red video on it type of thing.
We can show a whole picture.
A picture and everything else.
So, they can do it from the office?
Yeah, and you can do it from the office.
However, the town of Lincoln sign ordinance will not allow that. You can change it from the office, but it has to be, um, uh...
Not for so long.
Fixed, like, it has to be fixed, static.
No scrolling, no flashing.
No scrolling, no flashing.
But they can remotely sit in the office and change, you know, because of the technology.
Right.
But it can't be scrolling.
It can't be flashed.
How frequently can you change it? Because I thought one of the...
You could do a daily, you know, change, but you can't, it can't be, you could do hourly.
Rogers' change is about every thirty seconds.
I was gonna say, I thought one of the highlights was that when we have more than one message, yeah.
Three seconds later on the screen.
Right.
Not just like scrolling.
I wish I could comment on Rogers' sign, but I can't, so I won't.
But we don't want to, we want to...
We don't want to go there, we don't want to go there.
So, thirty minutes, is that okay?
We just don't want to go there.
What sign company is that?
That, uh, you want to talk to, it's Stuart Signs.
Right, that's the same one that you brought up.
Yeah, and the guy's really decent to, uh, talk with, right, he's willing to draw things up and do the whole thing, but this is the third time we've put him through it, so, you know, he...
And you talked to, someone at Profile, they're happy with the work that was done?
Yeah, that's what it sounded like.
Excellent.
And it does look good.
Sure.
I think it looks very nice.
Did they build a whole new sign, I think, why is it fourteen versus...
It might just be much bigger.
They, they, they said they had existing posts and electricity on site, and there was fourteen-five, so, I mean, that sounds very similar to our situation, existing posts.
Basically, they're gonna be the same size as theirs.
The same size, I don't know what...
We're, we're gonna have more space on the side of our posts, you know, it's gonna be closed, you're gonna be, the signs will be smaller than the post, that didn't sound...
I know what you mean.
It's gonna be lower, because their eight-foot one is actually eight-seven, and it won't fit in. It could be a little narrower because their eight foot wide is actually eight, seven, and it won't fit in to the size, so we have to go six foot, which is gonna be like a six foot. Four, six foot six, and then it's eight foot between the signs, we have exactly eight.
So there'll be like a foot on each side.
A little less of that, we'll, we'll put big brackets, make it, look some scroll work, make it look nice.
Yeah, we're getting existing posts.
Yeah, yeah, we could put a little bit of, weld some scroll work in there and do something, make it look nice, that's a success, it's made for it.
Excellent.
And a nice lumberjack.
So if we gave the town Lincoln, like, the specs on the sign.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's more of formality than anything.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I know.
Cause it's an allowed use now, so it wasn't too long ago that you couldn't have any kind of a interior lip sign, but.
We'll have an existing sign, it's just not.
How much is that, Mark?
Changed it.
Uh, the price, last price I got in is ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And it's the red, but it's the more pixel.
Is that installed?
It's thirty-two by eighty pixel, what's that?
That's installed? I'm just wondering why theirs was fourteen, because it's bigger, because it's bigger.
Yeah, I think theirs is probably the eight, but.
Okay, so theirs is eight, okay, so.
So what would be, what would be looking use the equipment trust fund for that?
Or technology?
Technology, which ones, which ones are a little bit less lean, yes?
Well.
What would be the recommendation?
Equipment has twenty-five, technology has nineteen, but I'm just thinking of some of the up, I don't know, I can't think of any upcoming equipment.
Stargate, what are we going to?
Yeah, don't forget I want a dump truck.
We probably go into the equipment more often.
Don't bid on that.
I don't know.
I heard you.
Well, we got the disposal last year, that was pretty inexpensive. Um, technology, we did get quite a bit, we got twenty-one thousand out of it last year.
Maybe we split it.
So maybe we do equipment.
As part of the technological.
I know, it's a little bit both, no. One.
One here.
Right.
I just said we leave it in half, half of you.
Yeah, well, I'll have to find out if we can do that, I think we probably can, just maybe, but part of it is equipment and part of it is technology.
Technology.
Just red, yeah.
No, postal, yeah.
Yeah, well, for the multicolored, see, it's a whole different ballgame, you're, you're talking like twenty-six thousand.
I mean, just the white matters. Get it accurate, is that what?
Well, they, you're either red or green for this company, or the other one, okay? When you go into the white.
They might have full color.
If they have full color.
Which is probably why it's fourteen.
You can do all the spectrums, this is just straight red.
The picture on the top has full color, so.
Right.
But I haven't had a chance to beat them up.
Can you pass that around? Can you pass that, that quote around?
Yep. It's on the bottom of the page.
Can you help give us a mock-up?
He's gonna give the mock-up and everything else. Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion, get on the table, we can discuss it further, but I would, I'd make a motion to expend, uh, to use the, what's it, uh, equipment. And the technology trust funds, uh, to expend up to eleven thousand, five hundred dollars for a new, a new sign. I'd like to do two separate motions.
Well, no, but, so you really should be making a motion to have the trust fund hearing, and then at the trust fund hearing, you'll vote the actual dollars, but, I mean, you can, yeah.
I second the motion to have a hearing.
Exactly.
So at the next meeting, the eleventh?
And that way, I mean, you know, we can get the mock-up obviously and see all that sort of stuff, and it's a little bit extra, a little bit of interest in case, um, there's unexpected stuff that needs to happen.
Brackets and whatnot.
Brackets, whatever it is they have to. Yeah, yeah. Is there a second?
I said.
Oh, he's, right. Any further discussion?
Jay? Oh, Jay, sorry.
I, I made the motion, just. No further discussion, everybody, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posits, nay, objections, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah.
That was much easier than the last ones.
Yeah, well, the last one, and I'm not gonna ever double print on two sides again either, cause that was a little rough. Yeah, I just wanna have it, unless somebody else wants to look at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
School sign, and in our blue folder, we all received some update about the website, Judy's gonna skip to that.
I just wanna read what Trey, Trey had, had put in the email, so we'll keep that on, on the record. It says, we are currently in the conversion stage of the new website build process, we have selected a design, color scheme, and overall layout of our new site. This design process is going, is ongoing and will take effort from all involved to make it what we want it to be eventually. School Insights is currently migrating the information on our current website to our new template and applying our preferences for colors, school information in model, and navigation preferences. Attached is a mock-up of the new print footage. Did you get it, copy it up? Okay, yeah. It says, the team at Linwood has been meeting and working together on this process since May of this year, this is not a process that needs to be rushed, only to determine later that we missed a crucial element in our plans. We have established a site map from our, for our new site that will serve as a blueprint for current and future content areas, again, a crucial process of planning to ensure that when we go live, we are confident and proud to present to the public. Upon receiving the complete converted site from School Insights, we can begin to rebuild and curate the content that we want to serve to the world. The length of this process could vary from two to four weeks, depending on the amount of new content that we wish to launch with. We hope to involve interested staff members as much as possible as they are closely connected to the community and the students. To sum up, we are making progress as fast as the process allows, we hope to achieve an October one launch date, if all things continue in this manner moving forward. Our intent for this relaunch is to ensure that we are not revisiting this issue in another two years as we are currently. This has been a team effort from the start of the process involving administration, teaching staff, and school board members. We strongly feel that the time that the process takes will be worth, well worth the results that we achieved.
Right.
Well, any information now that we are giving to or sending to Trey, and he gave us just some more direction the other day, goes to School Insights, and School Insights will start building that. So have that, that agent say that will be doing that type of work.
Right.
That they know how to do, and, and we're doing it step by step, so, um, each one now, each of the staff members have now been told about the, the next step. So then now they're starting to create what they want to be put into School Insights.
So I, this is all great news, and I don't want to be, you know, kind of the, Debbie Downes all this. But this process has been going on for the better part of a year and a half, two years, and I thought that at the last meeting, we were told that there was gonna be a launch sometime in August, August twelfth or thirteenth. So I just, I just wanna put it out there that if we're not launching, and this isn't anybody's fault, I know that everybody's working hard to do this, and they're trying to keep it in-house, and trying to keep it inexpensive, but we don't have web designers on staff. And my biggest concern is not so much the look, but the functionality, I mean, I think it's, it's all important. But if, if we're not launching October first with something that functions, I, I think we need to move forward and get somebody in to do this, that this is what they do. We, we, we fought long and hard to get somebody's systems.
We wanted to do that, actually.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I mean, we, we fought to get this in the budget, and it got pulled out of the budget a couple of times, this new website and all of these things over the last couple of years. And, and we finally have got it in a couple of years ago, and we're still, we're still in the process where it doesn't work as it should.
I guess I naively thought, what's School Insights, I thought, I thought this was who we hired to build it.
I, I don't think, I think that's just the, the company that gave us that platform, right, I mean, we're not, we're not paying them any money, we're just.
We pay it on an annual basis.
Right. But we always have, I mean, they're, they're the whole.
We don't have, okay, I see. I guess I was just.
And it's.
I thought they were like web designers and they were designing it.
No, I think they designed this template the same time, I mean, that challenge, kind of shows us through the back office how to update, keep up pressure and all that sort of stuff, which is great, but.
Not.
You know, it, it needs to function, and I, I gotta be honest, I'm frustrated. And I'm frustrated, I don't, can we, can we go through now and get into the launch piece of it, where we can see our kids' lunch, money transactions? No.
No, it's not on.
Cause we've talked about that for a long time, too, we've heard that mess come. Because I, you know, I trust the whole system that's in place, but not everybody appreciates it, no home, or how much money your kid owes, or the significant balance of money, I'm not knowing what the kid's spending the money on, after the fact. I mean, we really, we.
Nothing has changed yet, right?
It's the old sites, you know, yeah.
They can get to the lunch, we're gonna be putting that out, they can get to your lunch accounts a different way, just can't go through the website right now.
I was gonna say, cause I think in the welcome packet that I got for my kids, it says that you can go online to.
Yeah, and we'll be putting that, more information out at open house, the eleventh, how to get in there.
I'm pretty sure it does, there's like a whole message that says.
Without going through the website, yes, right now we can, yeah, it will be.
A parent or a student should be able to go to our website and access whatever they want to in, in a, in a couple of clicks, and it's, it's not possible to do that on almost anything now right now. Um, and it's, and I just feel like we're having the same conversation over and over and over, and I'm not blaming anybody, I appreciate the effort and the work that everybody wants to do, but sometimes you can't do it through. Sometimes you can step outside the box and let somebody do what they know we're gonna do, um, specifically to that, to that, and I know it costs money, but there's no sense in having it that doesn't work. That's my stance.
We definitely talked about, when we talked about the view of, say, trying to cover all the functionality that we were looking for, and I think one of the bigger things, one of the other big things that we were looking at was mobile access, because people can't access it on phones, uh, small digital devices. But when we talked about getting somebody in and the amount of money, and I think it was Trey who said, we want to try to do this in-house. And that sort of surprised me at the time because of the amount of work that's involved in that, and it's not like he doesn't have enough stuff on his plate.
Right.
Um, but, I mean, it sounds like they made a significant amount of progress, I, I, I guess I'm less concerned about the timeline than you, I mean, I understand that, and then, I guess partially because. I'm, going into that, I was sort of cognizant of the amount of work that was gonna be involved in that, so I really expected it to happen overnight. The other way, like, when I finish this, we add like a, whether we even care whether we sit down with laptops and run the system like the last time, to be honest, then. Being back, I was pretty excited that we could bring our computers in and like, practice all the paper, and then we were realizing that all this other stuff, we've been close to the background, that's not supposed to, we're gonna stop that. Because it seems like we go to launch, and then, but we, no one knows actually what happens up until that point, we, you know, Trey, great guy, but he's gonna call at some point and say, we're ready to go, or we just gonna hit a button and go? Or are we gonna sit there and try to maybe have a bunch of people sit down?
Well, I think, I would think that they happen a soft launch before they go live.
But, I mean, I think, with getting more people involved, I feel like we miss a lot of stuff, but, I don't have a child in the, in the system, so I don't need like a lot of the stuff that, that you, you, you talked about. However, it's the most difficult website on earth to navigate completely, it is crazy, you, when you click to like go to the mobile site, you just step back like five years, you know? Everything is just, it looks like a printed hit-up, you know, and then you try to click on something, it brings you somewhere, or it keeps bringing you back to the same page, so. I mean, my, my concern is that that got through, like, then are we just gonna build it?
Oh, I feel, I feel like the website works much more, much better than it did, and I think there has been some changes to it, yeah.
No, no, there's been changes, but they, we're gonna, we're launching this like new idea, it's gonna have all these portals, and it's gonna have all this movement.
Will it be user-friendly, is that what you're saying?
Will be user-friendly, and like, if I look for certain things, I'm not gonna notice anything that my, that parents are looking for.
Right.
Or staff's looking for.
Updated staff, something like that, dude.
Like, I don't, I'm not a picture guy, so like, I, I appreciate it, it's nice, I appreciate, but it's just like, I love you.
I don't think we should just take the conversation, I, I don't think we're fitting with the tension, but, when you're looking at something that will pile on someone else.
No, I, I.
I know, that's the one with the tension.
I, I was, I was, but I think we talked about before about getting, like, somebody in to do it, I feel like we haven't gone that route at all, we've just stayed the same route. I thought if I may talk about it, maybe I'm wrong.
No, we did talk about it, but I think that, I think then Trey came back with that he wanted to try to do it, and now we're kind of at the end of.
Cool, it's the old.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, and hopefully, I mean.
I guess.
Hopefully it's stellar.
One of my major concerns with sort of our in-house operation is this, this security, and I mean, if we, the statutes have significantly changed with respect to digital security of student records, and any academic information about, or identifiable information about students. Um, and so I, you know, sort of shared a concern with Brian, that when, before this thing goes live, we need to make sure that there's not something out there that, that is a security risk or people accessing that information that are excited about it or not. You know, that's what happens pretty regularly, we miss this sort of major change to all, it sounds like major change to all of the systems that we're using, or including access to, looks like student records on here, you know, lunch, money information, things like that, I guess, and. So certainly we'll be work making sure that none of that stuff is, um, that can be accidentally, you know, that they're, they're looking for.
And security is in place at this time, I mean, that, that took a long time to do, it was very intense, and a lot of steps were involved in the, in the process, so that, that is in place, and I, I do see this moving forward with School Insights and, you know, on board.
Recognition of visitors and public participation.
I don't have anything to share tonight. What have you guys been doing, Austin?
Community, John.
I just have one question, um, about, you were talking about this service that you're using to set up this website, do we pay into this service?
It's a hosting.
The host, yeah.
Okay, what does that cost, does that have a cost to it?
It's like you're renting space, it's like, it's like you're renting a spa on the internet.
And what is that, what's the cost of that?
I don't know the cost.
I can't, I don't know, I'm talking about the.
Can I get an answer at the next meeting, I'm just wondering what the cost is of that, if.
I mean, that's a cost we will have to pay regardless.
We actually have in a, a Verizon.
Yeah, it's like paying for a parking spot.
What, what does it do other than, what is its movement of information from there? So they're the company that movement of information, and they're helping, they're helping.
They built the framework, they built the framework, and they grade the access so that it's more user-friendly, but they also host it, so if you actually go back to it, there's something that's out there.
It also sounds like they're assisting with the transfer of information.
Which is great.
Yeah.
Does that also include the fee for domaining and?
That's a separate, that goes through a separate entity, yeah.
That's usually not there.
And I don't even know if there's a fee with that, it might have been years ago that we paid.
Yeah, cause we use a notch net where I work for our work design, and if we need to change documents, we just send it to them, they have like a set fee every month for extra and updates, and things like that, they did a fantastic job for us, for our association. I mean, I do some alterations through my office, but they host it, and it's, it's not terribly expensive, and they, they did a good job. I mean, if you're a work looking to hire that app to complete sort of, you know, the website.
Anybody else? No? Oh, Mark.
Shut the lights off, door's gonna be locked, you don't, you go out, you're locked out. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, crew for us, too.
Can I, my, thank you.
I would like to pull the board to go into non-public, there'll be no votes, oh, actually, there will be a vote after. So I'd like to pull the board to go into non-public session, discussion matters that are likely to diverse, and versus affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board, Tammy.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe? Yes? That's yes?
Yes.
Thank you.